Call the regular council's meeting together here at City Hall, March 5th, 2018. At 7:00 PM. Any additions to the agenda here?
The executive session.
Adoption of resolution.
Is it on here?
No, the adoption of the...
That's our resolution.
Yeah, that resolution.
Okay, the addition of resolution number 2018-03. Second. Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, 4-0. Okay, and on to citizens' comments this evening. Any other comments this evening?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council for hearing me this evening. Respectfully request that you waive the late fee on our February city bill payment for our utilities. Quick story, we had an honest mistake in the office. The bill was on the desk, ready to bring in on Thursday. Didn't get done. Friday, we weren't in the office. Monday was a holiday, so it was brought down here Tuesday and paid late. We addressed it as soon as we... Basically, the next day we were there, it was addressed. So, it was an honest mistake that was made. And now, there's a $950 penalty being assessed based on our bill, based on city policy. I don't think it's right to assess another taxpaying entity a $950 payment for a matter that was just a few days late. We are a taxpayer-funded entity. Our expenses come from our taxpayers, just like yours. We're different than other businesses or individuals in town. I understand you have policy in place, and that policy says it's a 10% penalty. I just ask that, you know, you guys were... You all were voted in to make decisions, and I apologize because of our error. Now, you have to make a decision on that. But I think if somebody told me a long time ago, "We're not slaves to the policy." We do what's right, based on the information that we have. And, you know, people are going to complain about your decisions. You've probably found that out already. And I know me personally, I make a lot of decisions, and our board members do. And we try to make decisions based on what's right and what we can sleep with at night. So, if you think it's right to make us pay that for a simple, honest mistake, we will live with that, of course. But we do ask that you waive that penalty. We don't have any other vendors that would assess a penalty like that. City of St. John will be the only one that would assess a 10% penalty on a $10,000 bill. None of our 200-plus vendors would do that to us, none of that, for a fact. And, you know, there's no cost to the city when we paid it late. Maybe a few dollars in interest for not having that in the bank. You know, this has happened before several years ago. I don't know the circumstances of when what happened with that one. Twice in a decade, doesn't show a pattern of neglect, in my opinion. You know, we've all had mistakes like that. I had a mistake like that with my mortgage bill. We called, and they said, "No, you're a good customer, and we want a good relationship with you, and we'll waive that." Which is a $20 late fee or something. Bottom line is, it was an honest mistake in our office. We acknowledge that. It's our error, and just think a $950 penalty for the taxpayers of the St. John School, Hudson School District because of my staff's errors is out of line. So, I ask that you waive that.
Anybody else?
Questions?
Anybody else want to speak to the issue of the school?
I, Mr. Morris, summed it up.
Okay, very good. What's council think? Thanks, Josh.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with waiving it. I think that's pretty excessive. I think they're, just like you said, taxing it. No point in charging that much.
Right.
You know, if it were something that happened every month, maybe different.
The last time something like this happened was about four years ago, five years ago? Jamie?
2014.
Yeah, so I don't see a problem with waiving.
I think just as long as it doesn't happen again really soon, we're going to get a lot of backlash on letting you guys go. I understand we are a municipality deal that we need to work with you guys with waiving that. We're going to get some backlash on that. I'd appreciate it if you guys could do something to get it on the calendar or make sure we can get it paid before, a couple of days before, or exactly on the 15th. If you could do something like that, if you guys can work on.
The biggest thing that I appreciated in this whole exchange is the fact that I called Josh to ask him about it immediately, once I was made aware of it. And Josh said, "We messed up." And I said, "You know what? Our clerk made a call. Policy states she makes a call. If anybody wants to appeal that, they can come here and do that." She was. She did grant them the extension on the late fee to the next bill, so that they could be here and talk about it and do that. We've done some things on our end to figure out fully what our policies are and how they go, and overall, been a good experience for us. And, you know, I know with Jamie that I was like, "Well, of course, you have my support in everything that you do, but ultimately, it comes down to our council deciding what they want to do." So, initially, maybe there's something we need to look at in the future on our policy. If a 10%, you know, on our big accounts, on our corporate account-type things, business accounts, with good solid customers, maybe we need to look into that a little bit more, so that we don't have these issues.
I would imagine the school's probably one of our bigger customers.
Right, right, right. But what I'm saying is, is we need to look into that and make sure this isn't happening again, because I don't want that problem. I know Jamie doesn't want that issue. It's been very stressful for her as well.
It just becomes an issue, like if we get a big bill, if we got a bill later on, it wasn't from you guys, but a $10,000 deal, and you didn't pay for 30 or 60 days, that's pretty much why I think the ordinance is good to keep it that way, is because then we're stuck financing it. This whole deal being five days in a...
I told you I'd get it done.
I don't see that this... I'd make an agreement to waive it this time, and if you guys can really look into something to make sure that's paid, and let's not have this confrontation again real soon, that's what I'd do.
People are human. People make mistakes, and I don't have a problem with waiving it on that. As long as we know that we can't do it, try not to do it again. Make it another 10 years or something.
Do you need a motion on that?
We got a motion on the table to forgive it. Okay, motion.
I accept to waive the fee. When I pay late, I have to pay the charges. If you've hired an administrator, you told her to enforce ordinances, and now you're changing it. If you don't back up your administration, and we should back up the administration here, we have an ordinance, so we... They've incurred it.
It's a municipality deal. We do have to go up and back for Jamie, but when we're dealing with the system, your kids, and he's got kids, and he's got kids in that school system, I'd rather even use the 900-some dollars to put towards that. We don't really need to take that from them. That's the way I see it. It's a deal where we deal with it.
You have ratepayers in town that are widows and old ladies on fixed incomes that get stuck with the late charge, and they're still stuck.
I feel like something that, that big of a late fee for that small of an increment, maybe needs to be brought to council. You know, maybe shouldn't be pushed on to Jamie, you know? She'd just bring it to us and see what we think and...
Which, that's kind of why the policy's set in place, so that she deals with these on a day-to-day basis, because we start seeing these things, then all we're doing at council meeting is taking care of the small things. Not that your job's a small thing, but you're taking care of these day-to-day things for us, because we should be focusing on something more than fighting someone over $950, which there is the appeal process. You know, that's what we're doing now, but again, maybe we set up a system, zero to five days, five to 15, 15 to 30 days in our ordinance. What is it that we do? But again...
Well, she sends me a late fee, and I have to pay it.
Well, I've paid one three times last year.
Marshall pays his.
I mean, I just don't... There's two ways to look at things, and I just believe we should work with the school system. They pay a lot each month on it.
I pay a lot of property taxes to several schools.
The school isn't here, we wouldn't be making as much money either. We've made a lot more than 900-some dollars easily in the last year than what you're talking about.
You're just trading one taxpayer for another, but I work for the city. I work for the people in the city. And it's a utilities tax. I mean, you don't call it utilities. It's really a utilities tax. It's our utilities sales, so it's just the way we fund our... 85% of our budget's utilities.
Well, I mean, it's only five days, in my opinion. We didn't finance them forever. I'll still be your friend afterwards.
Well, yeah, I'll just disagree with you there. This isn't personal. This is a disagreement, not personal.
I have a motion and a second on the table to forgive the full late fee on the city's last bill, or on the school's last bill. All in favor? All opposed? 4-1. Thank you, guys.
I have to pay my bill now.
Big point, 15th.
Are there any other citizens' comments? Can't see around the corner.
That lady's just back here.
All employees back there.
Scott.
Thank you, guys.
He always hides back here.
I'm scared.
With no other citizens' comments, moving on to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes. Regular council meeting at February 20th, 2018. Also, the appropriation ordinance, number 030518, in the amount of $71,118.36.
Salute.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I was in the council, so I'm not going to do a much thing, because I wasn't involved in it.
All right, moving on. Department head and committee reports. Grant administrator Lisa Cornwell.
BG Consultants was hired for the Nebraska school grant to do the engineering on that. I have a meeting with Sid tomorrow. He's been in Hawaii, so he's supposed to be back in the office tomorrow, and he said he called me. And I've got Splash, Splash and Play is supposed to be drawing a plan, a basic plan for the splash pad with a price for us, and they're supposed to have it by the end of the month to us. Not that we're going to use it, just we'll get an idea how much that would cost. That's about all I have.
Any questions for Lisa?
So, Lisa, the financing for that splash pad, is that something we're going to have pretty soon, like for this year, or we already have it?
We've got $20,000 towards it, but that's just a little bit of it. And so, Jeff was talking about doing some of the work, so we're just going to see how much something minimal would cost. We're not on a...
So, we have the $20,000 right now in hand?
We don't have it in hand. The Golden Belt Community Foundation has it as soon as we're ready for it.
Okay.
But we may decide we don't want to do it, and so, we haven't accepted their funding yet.
Okay.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa. And moving on to police, Adam Saylor report.
I don't have anything for you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The Aaron does have a nice new, clean-looking vehicle. It looks pretty big.
I do. I do with that.
Very good. All right. Fire chief Sanders report.
I don't have anything.
You guys are nice this evening. All right, city clerk. Here's Jamie Geddy.
She doesn't put anything down there, so she can surprise us.
I just have your valuation notices, if you guys want to look at them.
Did they raise them?
I don't know. I wouldn't have rushed you.
I don't know. They dropped them. I can live with that. That is on... of this building? Had to go hard, you mind dropped. I guess, too, but I don't know.
You get paid to do this.
$200. Yeah, it's a big check, isn't it?
I'm happy with them evaluations.
Watch what you can do if you don't.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah, there is.
There's a field process for everything.
I done took care of mine. Maybe they'll tell us our buildings aren't working as much as they used to be.
It's not always good when it goes down.
Which building is this?
611 East... That's this one. 611 East Fifth, 600 block.
I don't know what that would be. This street's just north of here. What does 611 fit?
Well, it's probably the treatment, water treatment. Maybe it's the water treatment.
It's five something.
It's the 600 block.
It's five something.
Yes, you're right. It was 500.
Yeah.
So, it's farther than that?
Yeah, towards Fisher's somewhere close.
It would have to be the treatment plant. That's the only thing we own. That's the only thing the city owns on.
It's not the same address that's on there, but...
What's worth it?
Not to say it's not, but that's not the same address.
Is it the sewer lift gate?
Lift station, maybe.
Wouldn't have an address, would it?
Lift station, maybe.
But it's not worth $70,000.
No, it's worth more than that.
660 East Eighth, that's probably just land. That's the industrial part.
That's Dylan's building.
This is the Dylan's building?
I'm not sure what Zero North Broadway is.
It's a lot.
For the most part, they all went down. I'm just glad that...
I don't think we got a cost back on the mayor. Do we pay property tax on some of these properties? Which ones?
Well, the water treatment facility.
Because we generated one.
Yep. And the other one, the 109 East Fourth, is going to be the Dylan's building, which is 53,000, I believe.
Yep. Okay.
Which is the one we discussed last week. I don't know what that... That's real far, and I don't know what that...
109, so there's land and treatment.
I don't know what that one is. $200 for that. No address for it. Just says North Broadway.
What's the city have on North Broadway?
I don't know. Don't have an address.
It's put down here. Cool. There's a pool. Pool, park. Water tower.
Well, North Broadway would be anywhere north of First Street.
It has no numbers.
It has no numbers, so you can't really pinpoint what it's... You might ask them about it, but I'm sure it's something.
Okay, there. Question?
All right, moving on. City superintendent Jeff.
I've been evaluating some sewer that is in desperate need of repair. Jim was at my office one day here, week or so ago, and saw some of it. After talking with an engineer, there's a possibility that depending on how many blocks, and there's quite a few blocks that need to be repaired that are in desperate need, that it would qualify for a CBBG grant. We're going to try and evaluate where we're at, what kind of cost the city could swallow. I want to sit down with Lisa a little bit and go through this and get a hold of Mayor's on some sewer lining, the cost per foot, and that kind of stuff. But we're just in the preliminary stage. I just want you to know that these tapes I looked at are 2004, 2005, and nothing's ever been done with them, and we've got some that are in pretty tough shape. Most of them are up in this end of town. Most of them serve and go underneath the school to hit the main part of the sewer that goes out to the treatment plant. So, you know, any of you that want to come in and look at those, I've got about 30 or 35 blocks that I really think the council should look at. It's not going to get any better. It's just not. And some of them are broke pretty bad. So, let me do some more checking. I'll sit down with Lisa. We'll look at this deal. I know that the grants are due in September, so we've got quite a bit of time here, but we kind of need to get something put together and see if it's something the city can afford. They're usually a 50-50 deal, so I'll just have to do some evaluating. And some of you, if you get a chance, give me a holler, and we'll look them over and see what you think. If you think we can let them go for a few more years, I'll let them go. But I really think that some of these the council needs to see, so...
Don't they run a pig through those to repair them?
They run a liner, is what they run. It runs about anywhere from $20 to $30 a foot. So, it's not an extreme cost, but by the block, about $10,000 a block. You know, anywhere between $6,000 and $10,000, depending on what it is, but...
To line it?
To line it, yeah. And some of them have long taps in them, and the sewer camera cannot get through them, but some of them, the roots are so bad, the taps hang in there, and they can't cut their way through. So, you know, I just think it's probably something that we need to look at fairly hard. We do have a fairly large sum in the sewer replacement, but I don't want to suck it dry by any means, but if we can finance it and do something over a period of years and get 50% of it paid for, why, I think it's something that bears looking at. So, anyway...
What's the age of that infrastructure?
A lot of it's going to be 80 years old, I'm sure, yeah.
I'd just say, from what those deals that you've seen, maybe get put in order from what's most critically needing fixed soon to later one, and then you know how much money we have.
That's kind of what I want to do. The south and east part of town all feeds up to Sixth Street and goes underneath the Industrial Arts Building to get to the west part of town. In fact, it even goes under a ladies' garage over here. So, there's some that really bears looking at, but...
How big is that? 10-inch?
Eight. Most of it's eight. So, we'll... I'll try and keep you updated as I go here, but I'd like to have some kind of... I'm going to meet with engineer, I'm going to try to, the end of the month, and just visit a little bit about it and see kind of where we're at, and then sit down with Lisa, too. I know we've got a lot of other things going on, but I think this bears looking at. So, we've had some problems up in this end of town and been in some places fairly regular here the last six months, and I really think we need to look at it. So, anyway, that's all I've got for right now.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Our newly-acquired land bank house, Jeff?
Yes.
On what second?
Uh-huh.
What do you think about the city tearing that down and hauling it off?
Well, I think we can. I don't have a problem with it.
What do you think about looking at something as far as if someone owns a house and wants the city to tear it down, and pay the city to tear it down?
The biggest thing's going to be the asphalt shingles and some of that stuff, you know, because we're going to have to... That's all going to have to be removed by us. But by the same token, we can haul all of our construction waste to the landfill.
Right.
So, I mean, we wouldn't have to do that, provided it doesn't get burnt, which it doesn't. I don't... We'd have to strip the roofs, as long as they don't have asbestos on it. If it has asbestos, it'd be a different story. You're talking about that cost?
Flat fee, I think, would be...
That's what I'm thinking.
I would like to put most of it off till late fall.
I'm not saying that, but I know like...
Yeah, I understand. We did in the past. We used to do them, you know?
I don't know if Stafford charges $500 or $1,000 a house.
Yeah, I don't know. It's not a lot.
And I know when I talk to them, they pretty much... They don't really make money, and sometimes they lose a little bit, but it is cleaned up and it's out of the way.
One thing that I would like to look at if we get to doing this as a regular deal is to put a thumb on my backhoe.
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to spending a little money if we need to clean up the tenant.
But, yeah, I don't have a problem with it at all. We used to do it all the time.
Is it something you need to look at, maybe foam filling the backhoe or loader?
The tires? Yeah, you know, it could come to that. We've never had a lot of problem with it. I mean, we try to be careful enough that we don't... Occasionally, we'll get a flat tire, but I mean, it's not...
You better hold on if you're going to foam fill little tires.
What do you know about tires?
A lot. Costs you about $12,000 to fill four tires on a high loader.
Yeah. But, I mean, in the past, we've done some in the winter time, and I don't have a problem doing them at all. I really don't. I think it's beneficial to the community, and, you know, a lot of times, if the weather's... You know, we've got tree trimming and stuff to do, but...
I mean, I understand there's people in town that do it, but, you know, people might be more apt if they can come to the city and say, "I can afford $500 for you guys to tear it down and make it go away."
And not $6,000.
And not $6,000.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
I'm not really trying to cut people out of the business, but I'm also wanting to try to get the tenant cleaned up.
Well, you clean it up faster at that rate.
Right, you could.
Sure.
I mean, there's probably, if I had a house, and I could say, "Here's $500, go tear it down."
Yeah.
Or wait four years to save $6,000 to tear it down.
Sure, sure.
The only problem I have with this idea is that everybody that has an interest in that house needs to sign off on tearing it down. I don't want one heir to agree to have the city tear down the house, and then the other two siblings say...
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, but...
Or they sign some kind of relief.
Be just like buying a car, have clear title to it before you do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I know there's some people in town that they themselves own a house, but they don't want to pay $5,000 or $6,000 to have it tore down.
Sure.
And they don't have the means to do it themselves. So...
Is that the list?
Stafford seems to be pretty happy with what they're doing. Yeah, I think they've taken quite a few this winter, I believe they have.
Yeah, I know they took three or four out at least.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Just recently. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
But I do... I talked to them over there when I was fixing some tires for them, but they said, you know, "We don't make money off of it."
Oh, no.
"But it doesn't necessarily cost us, but maybe $100 or so."
It's kind of like trimming the trees. You do it because of the...
Right.
So, you think it'd be probably a good idea to go ahead and have them price that down for that backhoe?
I mean, we might as well start looking at it, get prices.
If you give a little time, I'll do some calling.
I mean, I'd for sure like the land bank house. Now that we own it, I would like to put it on the list to go ahead and get it tore down and the property cleaned up.
Sure, yeah. Well, it's pretty hard to push if we don't take care of our own, so, yeah, I understand. You sure? Pretty good experimental house.
Right. I mean, at least...
Test run.
Test run. I mean, whatever you want to call it, but, you know, that's if the rest of the council's all right with it. But I mean, if you guys have time and want to do it in the next month or so, month and a half...
We got some tree trimming and stuff to do yet.[1739.46] We got some tree trimming and stuff to do yet, if the weather doesn't break too soon where we need to get it to pool, might we should have time to take it down, I hope, next thirty days?
It, like I said, it don't even have necessarily to be that quick, but...
Yeah, okay.
We know no one's gonna fix that house up.
And if not, it might have to wait till after the pool's open, and then we do it. But, yeah, if we can get it in the next little bit, we'll try and get it, if not, it might have to wait till after Memorial Day, but we'll take care of it, sure, okay?
Could be a sign up sheet for that. Anything else for Jeff?
I think that's it.
All right, City Attorney John.
I ask that you guys pass resolution two thousand eighteen zero three, setting the continued public hearing date on that, uh, West Second Properties, West Second.
And this gives them...
Uh, what's it, April twentieth, whatever you guys talked about last?
Was sixty days from the last meeting, wasn't it? So they got a dumpster over there.
April seventeenth?
Yeah, that's right, text day, April seventeenth.
Jeff, you were taking pictures of that weekly?
Yeah.
I think they just got a dumpster.
I have been here this week, but I was there the last two, yeah, we're keeping an eye on it.
I make a motion to pass resolution number twenty eighteen dash oh three.
Second.
Motion and a second to pass resolution number twenty eighteen dash oh three, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I think a five.
He's in five.
Appreciate it, I wanted to read it.
The second thing I have is later you're gonna be asked to pass ordinance, uh, one oh five oh and one oh five one, which, uh, you do on an annual basis, which adopts the, uh, new standard code for cities for traffic and, uh, offense code, your criminal code. Um, I don't know how that changes from year to year, 'cause I don't pay special attention to, uh, the nuances, but it, it, it adopts whatever the legislature passes the previous year. Uh, I mean, you guys have to adopt that as part of your code. But what's missing from that, and it's always been missing from it, and just kinda came up this last week, is misdemeanor marijuana possession, misdemeanor drug paraphernalia possession, which has always been prosecuted at the district court level, uh, which I don't know will be, I, I don't know what our current county attorney's position is on whether he's gonna handle those cases, he'd have to handle a current case because it's not otherwise gonna be prosecuted. But if we are going to continue to handle misdemeanor cases like we are, I guess, does the city want to consider passing an ordinance to mimic state law so that we could prosecute those cases instead of, uh, having to file those in district court?
Mr. Counselor.
Just... How many cases do we have here?
So far, we've only had that one, this one.
In, in a year, or in this year?
I don't know.
There was not, well...
Because because if it's filed in district court, we never know about it. It was just this issue, this, that just came up because Adam tried to file it here, and I pointed out that we didn't have... It's not, it's not illegal, on fire code.
Well, looking at from a financial standpoint, what's it, do cost us money?
I don't think it's gonna cost you anything, 'cause he ran a NIC test on it, you guys have NIC test kits.
Narc tests, yeah.
So they, they can run the test to determine if, if it's a, if it's a large quantity, it would, it probably wouldn't qualify as a misdemeanor anyways, and, and, and stuff would be sent to the KVI lab. But for a small quali- quantity like that, do you usually send it to the KVI?
It depends, if the narc test fails to identify what it is, then we send it to the KVI lab to find out for sure what we're messing with. And then also depends on the drug itself, what the penalty is, whether we charge it as misdemeanor or felony.
Yeah, I think, I think the only one would be marijuana, I don't think, well, that's Schedule one. It, it, you know, some cities handle it, some cities don't, Pratt doesn't handle any drug cases. Um, I don't know why, um, Wichita, what do bigger cities do, Topeka, those kinda cities, I, I don't really... I don't know what Great Bend does, Greensburg never did.
What do you recommend?
If you'll take the case, I say you just leave it how it is. Except I don't know if the county attorney's aware that we don't have an ordinance related to drug possession.
So if we really don't, so he'll get stuck doing it if we don't pass it?
Right, right. It'll, it'll be up to him, he can, he can decline.
He'll either prosecute it or he'll kick it out and say, I'm not doing it.
Let me see what happens.
I mean, there's a lot of people talking about drug problems, and if we're not gonna put something in...
I don't think the problem is the drug problems, I think the problem is, there's always been drugs, there's always been marijuana. I think the problem is the retail part and where the houses are, in vicinity to schools, et cetera. I think that's the main issue. You know, there's, used to, the, the main drug place used to be out on two eighty-one. You know, there's always been a place in town for retail.
If we get somebody and we can't, county attorney says, see ya.
Yeah, any kinda intent to distribute...
Where are we making any progress?
That, that's always gonna be a felony.
That's a felony.
If you, if you, if you have over a certain quantity, certain threshold, that's gonna be considered, um...
But if they arrest someone with intent to distribute, then we can't prosecute it anyway.
No, it would be a felony.
So all the charges would go that way?
And you're talking about somebody with, with like, and I don't know like drug quantities, I'm sorry, I don't do it, but less than a gram, maybe, something minor, and, and usually, usually it's, it's residue, stuff found in a, in a pipe or, or in a cup holder or something, that's, that's another type of issues. It's gonna be something somebody smells when they're pulled over, and that's what happened in this case.
So back to the question, what, what do you recommend then?
Uh, my thought is, and I'll bring it up, 'cause I, I have a chance to visit with Adam and see if it was accepted, but you can wait to see what's, what happened in this last one, and if he declines, then I'll just come back and...
I guess if he declines, go ahead and draw up the paperwork to pass the resolution so that we can prosecute him.
That, well, we wouldn't be able to prosecute this case.
The, the next one.
The next one.
I, I, I realize that, because we don't have anything in policy to do it, but I guess, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if the county attorney won't prosecute it, then...
I guess I wanted, wanted you to be aware that it's on our radar, that case or two cases has at least been presented to the county attorney.
If he drops one and we don't do something about it, that just tells everybody else, well, you get caught in St. John, guess what, they ain't gonna prosecute you 'cause they can't.
'Cause I think these are locals and all that stuff.
So, I mean, my suggestion would be is if county attorney doesn't prosecute it, then you, we need to draw something up so that we can through municipal court.
Okay, well, keep an eye on it.
Counselor, I think, yeah, I, I agree with that, just if he's not gonna do it.
I'd see what the county does.
Yeah, see what he does, I mean, if he'll take him fine.
How many cases like this do we have here?
It varies, Jim, I mean, it depends on, like you're saying, a lot of that is what you smell on a traffic stop. Um, most people, when you knock on the door, not gonna let you in to smell anything. So, it varies, I mean, we've had five, we've had eight, we've had none, we've had three, two, I mean, it varies depending on whether they're smoking while they're driving, you know, so, three would be about average?
A year.
Yeah.
Here's where it's gonna concern me, and I, and I don't know if you've seen anything like this, if somebody gets pulled over, say, and it's stop, it stops on, and, and then they get another charge, you know, maybe they've got an open container or something, and, and then on top of that, they've got the paraphernalia and the drug charge. My concern is, is with the, the district court county attorney saying, well, you've got these other two charges in city court, I'm not gonna burden you with the additional drug charge, so I won't prosecute you on the drug charge, and just let them take care of you in the city, city court on the other charges.
I agree.
Uh, because that, that happens all the time, and it did in, in Pratt and some other places, and, and so you kind of get to some of the problem, but you don't get to the underlying root of the problem, which is if they maybe weren't on drugs, and maybe they wouldn't have blown through the stop sign and wouldn't be doing other stuff in their vehicles, that's the kinda thing I'm...
Chances are if they're smoking, they may wait for a stop sign to change colors. I read about it one time.
What else, John?
That's it, that's all I have.
Anything else for John?
Nope.
All right, moving on to old business, splash pad information that's already...
All of those are just...
It's been addressed?
We haven't got...
I mean, it's been addressed already, yeah.
We talked about it, but you haven't got anything else for any of them? Swim, you haven't torn a swimming pool?
Nope.
Transformer cost?
Yep, got one of them. Lowest bidder's fifty-eight fifty from T and R, the same guys always buy transformer from, so...
Hundred?
Fifty-eight hundred and fifty dollars, yeah. It's about three weeks out, so...
So we got one coming?
I haven't ordered yet, didn't have your permission.
Is that, is that a pad mount or...
A pad mount, yeah.
Is that the only one they need?
Yeah, should be, that's what the engineer specified, so that's what I, that's what I priced, so...
Well, we gotta have it.
What do you, you know, you were talking about not having a backup transformer, if that were, were to go bad, what do you, I mean, what's...
I could put pole mounts out there, but I'd have to fence them off, I could make it work.
Okay.
Well, I don't know whether I could or not, 'cause they're two seventy-seven, I probably couldn't. Yeah, I probably couldn't, I keep one spare for like up at the school, I have a two seventy-seven bank up there, five hundred KVA bank. Those are standard pole mount transformers in that cabinet, um, and I keep a spare for them. But, uh, and I mean, I could cabinet this one, I don't know what the pole mounts would cost.
I, I was just curious, you know, if you had a backup plan if it were to crash.
I guess you get on the phone and see what you can find, you know, I could probably get one fairly quick out of Solomon, but it'd be quite a bit higher. That's what I ran into this time, of course, um, the prices have come down from Solomon, but we have a buddy of transformers from it for years because they were sending out a lot of faulty pods, so a lot of guys quit buying from them. Um, this place that I buy from's out of Coleman, South Dakota, but they make a route through here about every three weeks. They pick out my junk ones and they pay us, you know, a dollar KVA or a dollar fifty KVA for just the cans and that stuff, as long as they're clean, so, we've done a lot of business with them over the years, but if I needed one in a hurry, I could probably get one ninety miles away.
Yeah, what's their estimated usage per month, Jeff?
You know, I wish I knew, Jim, I have, they gave me the blueprints, I have not talked to the engineer since before Christmas. I really don't know.
So we don't know what the payout is on this?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
That's actually, that's actually cheaper than what I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, I thought it'd be around seven thousand was what I was guessing, but...
Seven or eight.
But it, uh, you know, I had a guy that priced me a new one at, at eighty-two hundred, but these, these are all remanufactured, but you know, we've never had one go bad. I mean, I've been buying it for a lot of years, we've never had one go bad, unless it got hit by lightning. And the protection on these, you know, we put restors and stuff on it to protect them, so... But, uh, we also, we're gonna set this up so it's isolated, so should it go down, it won't take anything else out, be by itself, so... But, uh...
Well, I make a motion to buy the transformer.
Sorry. What's the amount on it?
Fifty-eight fifty.
Is there tax on that?
I don't think we pay tax on it, I'm not gonna swear, 'cause it's out of state. I don't know, we buy them out of South Dakota, so...
Do you wanna up to amount, or do you want the fifty-eight fifty?
I don't think we ever have, Mars, that I know of.
Fifty-eight fifty plus tax if there is any.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
This is why we pay you the damn price. We love you, James. A motion on the table for transformer, amount of fifty-eight fifty plus tax if there is any, is there a second?
Yeah.
Ryan has the second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, five oh. Okay, and then, well, number two?
Um, Ryan and I are gonna try and get together and evaluate that a little bit before I really jump back in and say anything, I've got a couple different ideas. I think the one that's probably gonna be the cheapest is not necessarily the one we want, but, uh, evaluating whether we wanna use, uh, treated water, which we have inside the wellhouse now, or whether we wanna try and pump it out of that well before we come to the council with a conclusion. So, uh, we'll try and get together in the next couple of weeks and look at it over and see what we can do, so...
Was that, was that pump motor optimal before the state shut down?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know whether it's, I don't know whether it's usable with the VFD. That's what I don't know. That motor's old, that motor's gotta be fifties vintage, it's been in there forever, you know? So, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know that it would be any different, I, I think the might needs would probably be better on it, but...
Right, right.
You're more familiar with that stuff than I am, so, anyway.
So do you run it variable frequency, is that what you're trying to do?
That's the way we pump our gallons on our other wells, and if I was gonna push it up...
Put a speed pod on it?
I'd like to adjust it to about three hundred gallons a minute, you know, on a big, on a three-inch line or somewhere close, so...
How big a motor is that, Jeff?
I'm gonna say it's twenty or twenty-five horse, just guessing. So, anyway, it's just a thought, but we'll, we'll look at it when you get time and, and we'll see what we can bring back, so, anyway. That's all I got, folks.
Yeah, on that stuff, we didn't talk about the swimming pool.
He doesn't have anything for us on that, yeah?
No, we haven't, you know, we, the weather's been so up and down, I'm afraid to go up there and open that up until, I mean, we still got trees to trim, we've had truck breakdowns, we've had everything that could happen.
I just, I wasn't sure if you had talked, I was referring to like talking to Stephanie, she said she had...
She's never said a word to me. She brought it to you, but she never said a word to me.
Does this not have it sneak up on us?
It must not be, it must, I'm not on the important list, so she hasn't brought it to me.
You're on my important list, though.
Well, I haven't seen the list, so I can't tell you. I'll bet you it's not even more than what we already got on it, but, you know, I've got some thoughts about that too, we'll bring them up at the appropriate time, so, anyway.
All right, with no other real business, moving on to new business, the ordinance listed there, ordinances listed there, John?
Can they just adopt the standard traffic code and the standard...
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance ten fifty dash eighteen and ten fifty-one dash eighteen, second.
Who's claiming it? Mark's claiming it. All right, a motion on the table to approve ordinance number ten fifty dash eighteen and ordinance number ten fifty-one dash eighteen. All in favor? All opposed, five oh. And with no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
I for the lack of a second.
Did I hear it? It was Ryan, it was Ryan, motion and a second on the table, all in favor. All opposed, five oh.
Guys for the lack of a second.
Guys for lack of a second.
That'll never happen.
Easy.